Call to order the Board of County Commissioners for a work session for August 25, 2015. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of our majesty. I'm going to go ahead and talk to you.
Any changes that need to come on the agenda today?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The purpose of the county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting, and department heads and other elected officials to communicate with commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution Number 1501, we welcome the public to attend the county work session, however, there will be no public input permitted today at this meeting. We'll start with reviewing the regular meeting agenda, and I'll turn it over to the manager.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, first item on your agenda, public hearing for consideration of ordinance Number 0-15-04, considering increasing the size of the Board of County Commissioners to five members, following that action to approve/disapprove ordinance Number 015-04. Any questions on that?
I'll go over that for about three months now.
Didn't think you had any questions. Moving on to financial reports, Linda, could you please review the expenditure report?
Well, thank you, starting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In front of you, you have an expenditure report for approval in the total of $3,129,666.17, and this is for the period ending August 24, 2015. There's AP checks totaling $2,513,342.15, and I will go over some of the highlights on these expenses. There's a check for $18,000 to NMAC for the 2016 participation fees, a check to Timberland Construction in the amount of $110,669.12, and this is for the work at the Sheriff's Office Walt, a check to Artesia Fire Equipment in the amount of $11,445.15, and this is for miscellaneous firefighting equipment for Whiskey Creek, a check to Holly Frontier Refining Market, and this is for oil for the 2015 World Special Projects, a check to Bank of Albuquerque in the amount of $907,892.96, and this is for the debt service for the deal bonds, the 2009 and 2014 series, a check to HCP Systems in the amount of $14,545.20, and this is for the medical management systems for the month of August at the detention center. There's also a check in the amount of $39,810.40, and this is to Summit Food Services for the May and June inmate meals, a check to Ascent Aviation Group, this is for July fuel, the check is for $17,079.52, a check to New Mexico General Services Department in the amount of $20,516.7, and this is for the fiscal year 2016 unemployment compensation, and a check to Southwest Solid Waste Authority in the amount of $45,935.67, and this is for the July picking fees. And included in here also in this expenditure report is payroll number, pay period 15 and pay period 16, pay period 17, and academic incentive pay, and the total amount for this period of payroll is $616,324.2. No questions?
No, thank you. Moving on to new business, Item C, approve/disapprove Grant County Detention Center Policies and Procedures, General Administration Uniform and Equipment Policy. The main reason for this policy is to include the requirement for officers to wear body armor as part of their uniform. There's some other minor changes from the previous policy. Abby's reviewed this and restructured it. Mike, do you have anything you would like to add to this?
Commission members, it's just a revision to the old policy that we had, and we're just upgrading that particular policy, just bringing it into compliance.
So, based on how that was voluntary, if they wanted to wear body armor?
No, sir. We've always had, we had a directive. When I put in for the grant for the protective vests, it was part of the grant requirement that we have a must-wear policy. We put in a directive, and we've been working on the policy, and this has just kind of solidified the fact that once they come into the secure area of the facility, they're required to wear their vest.
And that's everyone, correct?
That's it, sir.
Item D, approve/disapprove Grant County Detention Center Policies and Procedures, inmate rights, inmate grievance procedures policy. This is completely revising the inmate grievance policy to bring it into compliance with what we're actually doing. The ACLU recently brought up concerns in regards to their grievance policy. I believe this addresses all of their concerns and cleans up things and better matches what we're actually doing. Mike, anything else you want to add?
Mr. Chairman, Commission members, again, this is just a revision of the policy that we had before. We're upgrading that policy. We're also including, and probably being more specific with the inmate grievance procedure for the inmates and how they're able to go ahead and whatever grievances. It also pretty much defines the grievances. Before, we really didn't have a clear definition on what they could grieve and what they couldn't, and now that's more specific, so we're kind of going to cut down on what the grievances are, and they're in good being compliant for this policy.
Any questions, Concerns? Moving on to Item E, approve/disapprove Grant County Public Shooting Range Advisory Board bylaws. The new Shooting Range Advisory Board has gotten together and revised the bylaws. Abby has reviewed and made some changes, and what you have in front of you is what we're asking for approval. Justin, anything you need to add to that? The bylaws for the shooting board now. Item F, approve/disapprove appointment of Mr. Frederick S. Graham to the Parks and Rec Committee. He says a vacancy. It's the only one we received for that. Item G, approve/disapprove Grant County Sheriff's Department field interviews and pat-down searches, Policy 26. Sheriff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is just updating the policy for the current laws that are in place, and it's just protect, being a little bit more cautious with doing pat-down searches on individuals. It's protecting the individual and the officer that's doing the pat-down search in that sort, just being a little bit more cautious and trying to be in place with the Supreme Court rulings and laws that are in place. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Abby, is she going on over all this?
Yes, Abby's reviewed all of the policies.
I'm sure she did.
Item H, approve/disapprove deletion of public transportation vehicles from inventory. We have eight items that are taking up space at the Road Department that are no longer in service that we would like to delete from the inventory.
What are we going to do with that?
So, not action.
Do we have titles?
Yes, we will make sure that we have titles in hand before we auction anything off in the future. Any more questions or comments? It doesn't matter. Moving on to Item I, approve/disapprove 2016 Fire Protection Grant application for the Santa Rita Volunteer Fire Department and the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department. Santa Rita is requesting monies to construct another station, and...
But this is the one we've been working on with the plan, Scott.
That's Tyrone doing that senior application.
Should've waited for shots.
Final trip getting up here. Good morning.
Just a little white button up there and make it turn around. Maybe start it.
Good morning. Yes, Tyrone is requesting, made an application for the purchase of a new engine. We're asking for $100,000 with a 10% match and to use that as a down payment.
What's the total cost of one of them?
That kind of varies on all the gadgets and things that are on it. We're probably, ballpark, probably looking at $350,000, somewhere in that range. We're looking to replace an engine that's from 1985, so we desperately need to replace that truck.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Moving on to contracts and agreements, Item J, approve/disapprove Agreement A15-27, Bohannon Houston FAA Application Grant for the Grant County Airport. Justin, do you want to give a brief update as to what that entails?
Chairman, Castings, Commissioners, what this application is going to be for is for Phase One of the design and reconstruction of Runway 826. This is the submittal that we sent to the FAA, so we're getting everything back. It's for $150,000. It's a 95% match by the FAA, 2.5% by the state, and it's 2.5% by the county. I think that $3,700 is what it came out to for the county part, which we could take out of our improvement funds, I've talked to Charlie about, so we've already worked that out. So, this is the Phase One of the, the total construction phase will be next year. We'll do that, which is the 4.9 million for the 826 runway to get developed. That's a four-inch mill in overlay. So, that's the first phase that we need to get it done.
Okay. We're going to know which runway we're milling?
The main runway 826.
The whole thing?
The whole thing. Yeah, we just did that, that big Band-Aid, yeah, just the slurry sill we did about a year and a half ago now, so that was to get us over until this part. We've been on the waiting list for the FAA, and I know we're, we're one of the airports that needs to be, that needs to get done.
I'm sure Earl can't wait for the millings.
No, those are my millings, those. That's pretty much it. Bohannon Houston could be here, Dumas wanted to be here, so I'm speaking on behalf of Bohannon Houston to explain what's going on.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, Item K, approve/disapprove Agreement A15-28, United States Department of Agricultural Work and Financial Plan for July 1, 2015 through July 30th, through June 30th, I can't read it all today, June 30th, 2016, for the Integrated Wildlife Damage Management Program. This is a revised agreement. The first one was more than what we had budgeted, so we asked them to revise for what we actually had in our budget, so that's what's in front of you. Questions?
Twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one nine. Twenty-one nine eighty-nine, and that's what's actually in our budget. Moving on to resolutions, Item L, approve/disapprove Resolution R-15-27, intent to consider adoption of an ordinance repealing the 1984 Grant County Employee Relation Ordinance Number 84-09-04. I'm going to let Abby explain this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've spoken about all three individually, about our plans to clean up old policies, and there's this ordinance, and then there's the next ordinance that we're putting a resolution in intent in front of you to repeal for other ordinance. This first one is essentially, it was a union ordinance, labor ordinance, set out the parameters and scope of starting union bargaining, all the things that are really covered under PIBA now. As you can see, it's really old, and the county really hasn't used it since I've been here, and management didn't remember it really. So, I thought it'd be a good idea for us to go ahead and repeal the ordinance. I've notified the union of our intent, put it in front of you for repeal, and I haven't heard any objection at this point, and I left it there about a month ago. I apologize, I didn't give you a copy of it, I just forgot. I'll provide you all a copy of the old ordinance after the meeting. And it's actually less favorable to the union than PIBA, so I don't see why the union would have an issue with this, especially since we don't follow it.
Explain what PIBA is, so everybody knows.
Let's see if I can say it right.
Public employees bargaining.
Right. It's the governing statutes over union formation and bargaining, and if you have old ordinance like we do, you can follow, your grandfather did. So, we could follow this ordinance if we wanted, but we also have the option of just following PIBA, and for the most part, we have just followed PIBA in the last few years. Anytime something comes up, that's where I look, because our ordinance is outdated.
So, there was no state law when we originally had?
Actually, there may have been.
Okay, PIBA wasn't?
Right.
The Public Employees Bargaining Act.
Yeah, I'm a little fuzzy on the years, but PIBA is the most current, and actually, I think there probably was not statutes governing bargaining at that point in 1984.
So, Grant County had their own ordinance that governed that.
And other counties did too.
Which is actually more strict than the Public Employees Bargaining Act.
It's much more detailed and less favorable to the union. PIBA is more general, and now our contract is much more detailed. Many of the things that were covered in our old ordinance, the 1984 ordinance, are now just addressed in the bargaining, in the contract itself. For instance, how we address grievances, or how an impasse would be addressed through PIBA, or... So, the issues that are addressed in the old ordinance are covered now. They're just covered through PIBA or our bargain, or our union contract, excuse me. So, it's not like we're taking the rules away and we won't have anything to follow. So, we'll see if the union says anything, but at this point, our recommendation is to go ahead and repeal it because we're not using it anymore.
It's updating to the current use.
And again, I'll give you a copy of that after the meeting, if you like that.
Next item, approved/disapproved Resolution R15-28, intent to consider adoption of an ordinance repealing the 1978 Grant County Personnel Ordinance Number 78619. Same thing Abby can explain.
This one is really, really old. What this is, is it's akin to our current employee manuals, but it's from 1978, so it's pretty outdated.
What I'm really wondering, I'm really, really old.
I mean, for a policy. I am older than this ordinance.
Wow. She's barefounded.
Anyway, by the date, you can tell it's probably very outdated. Since then, we have employee manual, the employee manual, the union contract, and we have other manuals regarding safety and vehicle use, and it's really, we don't use it at all. We haven't even looked at it, and I'm not sure if the previous county manager knew about it, because it is so old.
I can't read.
Charlene, he didn't really read. Charlene does, I told her about it. And there are even sections that you can't even read, they're not logical. So, my recommendation would be go ahead and repeal it, just to get it off the books, and we're working currently on revising our employee manuals and policies, so those will be in front of you in the next, probably next six months or a year or less. We're really trying to clean up everything up, and I'll get a copy of that for you all as well.
Next item, N, approved/disapproved Resolution R15-29, says a resolution adopting an Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, otherwise known as the ICIP Plan. Anthony, would you please review that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I think I sent a copy, a digital copy to everyone on email. There were, was, there are some changes since last time. I visited with each individual commissioner and kind of set these priorities according to those discussions. There was, through a public hearing that we had for CDBG, there was an additional request because of some capital monies that had been discussed with Senator Morales for the, based on Park and Cliff, and so I added that on just because of those discussions. I don't know whether the commission would, that's been brought to Grant County. I think that we actually have a resolution that if we're going to be a fiscal agent or be receiving capital monies, that they're supposed to bring a plan to Grant County before they make that request. But I haven't received that, but since, we probably won't have another opportunity to update, although it's rumor has it that we should be able to update your ICIP throughout the year now. I thought it best served if I put that on the ICIP. But I haven't spoke with the commission since I sent this out, I think last, last week or something like that, last Thursday, and so if there's any changes that need to be made, certainly express those, and I can get them changed before Thursday's meeting. There are one other, some other changes that are going to occur, and that has to do with what Justin just reported on, on the airport runway construction. I'm going to update the numbers on the airport, and he sent me over his plan for the next five years. I will update these numbers accordingly, according to what he sent to me, and I didn't really understand the formulary that they have to, it's kind of, it's similar to ICIP just for the airport. I just got to get with them and see what those numbers mean, and so I can enter them into this form, so, unless you have any questions, though.
ICIP? It's good to me. Not sure about Earl's chip spray getting so high. I've been asking for that for about three years.
I'm hoping that maybe he'll make him go away here, quieten.
You want to make Earl go away, is that just?
At least be a little more quiet about it.
Still loud, right?
Now he's on something. Next item is recess as the Board of Commissioners reconvene as the Grant County Endent Health Plan Claims Board to approve or disapprove health plan claims for the period ending July 31, 2015. Those are enclosed for your review. There are 62 claims to Gila Regional Medical Center in the amount of $44,408.84, and there are two claims to Gila Regional Medical Center Ambulance in the amounts of $1,0542.12, for a total of $45,950.96.
Does anybody have anything that needs to be added, or moved, or deleted from the agenda? Okay. Then we will move on to county reports, and we'll start with my favorite hospital administrator.
Appreciate that.
You're my only hospital administrator.
Yeah, I do. Appreciate that. Good morning. Good to see everyone. Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chair. I'd like to start out with a discussion of Gila Regional finances, and just a reminder, we're always a little bit behind as far as our reporting, so I'm going to be reporting on end of June finances, which is the end of fiscal year 15 for Gila Regional. The month of June, we finished with a bottom line of about $175,000, but the closeout for the fiscal year was a negative $1.3 million, but I want to kind of put some context around that. These are the unaudited finances. We're in the process of our end-of-the-year audit with a third-party, state-approved auditing firm, and things are already shifting around, and I'd be hesitant to, you know, say anything until the audit is complete. But one of the, one of the key issues was, we were reserving about $1.9 million related to the safety net care pool, holding it in reserve because we're expecting in 2016 to potentially have to pay back some of those monies, given that the first year we received them, it was based on an estimate. So, we're waiting for the state to give us the formula about how much money we're going to have to pay back. So, we were holding $1.9 million in reserve. We're getting closer and closer to what the actual number we should be reserving is, and so we think we're going to drop a significant amount of money to the bottom line, but we'll just kind of hold on that till the audit's finished. I personally believe we're going to finish the fiscal year, once it's audited, very, very close to break even, maybe even a positive bottom line again. But officially, you know, the unaudited finances, we did report a $1.3 million negative bottom line, but more to come on that. We also finished with 145 days of cash. That's up from last year. We finished with 128 days of cash. The year before was 109 days of cash, so cash is going in the right direction. And given that this was a rebuilding year for Gila Regional with a huge IT project that we're still in the middle of, and our growing physician practice network, this is a really strong year for Gila Regional. First year was recovery, second year was rebuilding, third year is now some bigger projects as we expand out into the community, and I'll talk about that in a second. So, that's kind of the financial overview. Big project that's coming up, we started talking about a month or two ago, is this concept of a clinically-integrated network. The Affordable Care Act is obviously pushing healthcare forward with significant changes. They're changing coverage, they're changing reimbursement, lots of changes, and in order to strategically react to that, there's certain things that you should be involved in. Gila Regional is choosing to move forward in collaboration with our medical community to form what's called a clinically-integrated network. So, this is a formal entity that will allow the hospital and other medical providers to collaborate at a very high level, to come together legally so that we can do things like joint-negotiate for insurance rates. But the real outcome of this kind of collaboration is information systems, interoperability, better communication, which will result in better care for the patient. The goals around the ACA are that triple aim: improve the patient experience, right? Improve the quality of care and their patient satisfaction, decrease cost of care, and to now start to look at caring for the health of populations or the health of our communities. So, that triple aim is the driver of this project. So, you're going to hear more and more out in the community about this clinically-integrated network. We have our, we've had some open meetings with our physician community, our medical provider community, and now we're going to be starting in September, formal meetings to start to put this project together and actually do the work of forming this entity. And we're going to be reporting, you know, ongoing about this big project. Big, big, big project. This is really, from our perspective, and I think from some in our medical provider community, really talking about the sustainability of healthcare in this area. As healthcare continues to be more challenging, there's different models that you need to adopt to address this. This clinically-integrated network's going to do multiple things, but primarily create more sustainable model for our medical providers, so we can keep physicians in this community, a more sustainable model for the hospital, to maintain a full-service hospital into the long term, and it will create an integrated network to provide better care for our community so that they can get the best care possible as close to home as possible. That's the ultimate goal of this, better care for our community, and it'll do these additional, address these additional elements too. Sustainability for our medical community, sustainability for the hospital. Very big, very important project for the long-term sustainability of our healthcare services and the hospital as, you know, a healthcare provider, and also, of course, as an economic driver in this community. So, you're going to hear more about that, and maybe even you may hear more about some competing competing models out in the community. And we'll be addressing those in open town halls and lots of other communications. Still recruiting for a CFO for our organization. That's a big challenge for us, to get the right CFO. Still recruiting for that. Pat Shakup, our Chief Nursing Officer, retires this week after 53 years in nursing. We just can't say enough about that kind of legacy. We've already hired Peggy White as our new CNO, and they're working on that transition. Peggy's been in town for a long time. Many of you probably know her. And so we won't, we won't skip a beat with that CNO transition. We're going to continue to move forward very strongly with a commitment to our nursing services. We have a project we're now formally kicking off now with, with our county manager and some law enforcement around the indigent program and some of those expenditures. And we're going to be doing a deep-dive review of the regulations and processes around healthcare billing for citizens in custody or inmates, and making sure that we're doing everything we can to support each other in that process. And hopefully we'll, may, what will come out of the end hopefully is maybe a positive impact on those charges applied to the indigent fund. We're looking forward to that project. We're moving forward in the next couple of weeks with an assessment of our labor and delivery area. This is a project I think Gila Regional's been talking about for 15 years.
Modern.
Yeah, being conservative. And we're moving forward with the assessment of that space. Next phase will be architectural renderings, and of course, looking at financing at that point. It's going to impact labor and delivery and our OR, our recovery space, and we'll be coming forward, potentially talking about some finance options in probably the next six months or so. This is not the big master facility change everything. This is a really targeted construction project, but it may impact some other areas of the hospital. That's all I have for my report for today. I would stand for questions.
Okay. Any questions, Brad?
On this comment, I'm really pleased that on this, working on your integrated care, you know, it's interesting whenever we, on Tucasa, when we did our needs assessment, that's what we found was lacking in our community as far as substance abuse is that we weren't all working from the same page and that, and that because we were so fragmented and siloed, that it created problems. So I really applaud you for, for, for doing that, because I think it's important that we put everyone, because the bottom line is service.
Yeah.
And that's what it does.
And the regulations and the laws did not support integration, you know, for healthcare's history. It's really frustrating to get into a meeting, you know, as you speak of, and, well, why can't we get together? The laws don't support it, the regulations don't support it. And so now healthcare, the, you know, ACA is moving us towards increased accountability. It's forcing us to do that. You know, I think, I think many of us-
Even the best, when everyone's doing what they're supposed to be doing and doing it well, but if it's not coordinated, then we're, we're not doing a service to the public and to the clients.
decisions are requiring us now. Many of us think that's a good thing, and we really look forward to this project.
Good.
And you updated on the PSA screening?
Yeah, you know, and I think you've been copying onto me now about that project. We're still moving forward. It's, it's still a challenge, and the issue was, Gila Regional used to, for a period of time, offer free PSA screenings each year. Well, as each year, things become more and more complicated, we've run into some complications, you know, around things like anti-donation, right? Giving away free things as a county hospital. We also ran into things, issues like, well, if somebody comes for a test for us, a free test of any kind, you know, PSA or even blood pressure, if it's not in conjunction with an order from a physician, what do we do with the results? Right? You know, there's some of the complicating factors. What happens if there's a, you know, a significant negative result with the information? What do we do with it? Do we just give it to the patient or the person, or not even a patient at that point? What do they do with it? What is our legal responsibility if they don't then follow up with their physician? So we're trying to still connect all those dots, and we're, we're still working on that project, still communing, communicating with the PSA Support Group to see if we can still create some version of that project. But it's getting more and more complicated to give to our community, right? To give back to our community. But we're working through those challenges. So still working on it. What, keep you in the loop?
Thank you.
Welcome.
So you mentioned there was 145 days of cash, and I'm assuming the payables are all current?
Yes.
And you say we're not trading one for the other?
Appreciate that, that question. Our payable's actually pretty low. They stay around that 30 to 40 days.
Perfect. Yeah, the L and D, that's been a conversation since I was a trustee, and I think that was in '97, '98, and we started talking about that. It's still basically the same-
Same problem.
Same exact problem it has been. There's never been a, a really easy fix for that end of the building, the way it's situated, and it was always a domino that you couldn't push over because it created so many other dominos that you couldn't, you couldn't afford it.
We're extremely confident that we're going to address it. I mean, you know, there are some complications up in that area of the building, but, you know, for some reason, it's just never been followed through on. We're going to do the assessment and follow through, so barring any unforeseen major circumstances, we foresee that project tracking along and actually getting completed.
Okay. And I know that you had a resignation offer to the Board of Trustees yesterday.
Yesterday, yes.
And I was just letting you know that we, I don't believe we have a meeting in October, I mean, September, where all three of us are going to be here, do we? We're going to be twos. So it'll probably be November before we do that. But that'll give us ample time to advertise.
Great.
I know that the person that resigned was kind of the, more of a financial end.
Right.
So that's what we'll be looking forward to replacing with, is somebody in the financial, with a financial background. So if you know of any financial people, please get them to apply. We did.
Very much appreciate that.
So that's all I have.
I did also pass on your thanks from last month-
I saw that.
-to our board and to our entire organization, so we thank you.
Appreciate that.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, Brad.
Okay. Mike?
Commissioner members, I respectfully submit our report for July 17 through August 13, 2015. Item number one, we're doing an update on our policies, so you'll probably see a continuation of some of the updates that we're trying to get accomplished. Item number two, there's been one slight correction. We now have two part-time and one full-time vacancy at the facility. Item number three, the status remains the same. On our training update, I have contacted New Mexico State Police, their SWAT team, and they have agreed to come down and provide training for our SERD officers, and they're going to do this at charge to the department. I really appreciate Captain Gomez. When I made the phone call, he absolutely said it was no problem, so I really appreciate and want to give a shout out to the State Police for helping us with the training. Deputy Administrator Andazola and Sergeant Galindo and also Officer Nathaniel Fisher completed the PRIA training. Also during the training, we have a training coordinator that was taking part in this PRIA training, and she agreed to come down to our facility on a weekly basis and help us structure our, our PRIA training and get our facility in the compliance. So she's just waiting for approval from her supervisor to do that. So again, that's another assistance that was, has been provided to us at no charge, so I really appreciate her. And I'll, I'll be submitting a letter of, you know, thank you to her whenever she comes down and completes that and really helps us. This is a, is a really important program, and it's very specific and very stringent, so we need to do this right. And she agreed to come down and help us, so I really appreciate that. On item number five, the inmate support program, continue to work with that. Again, thanks to Charlene and Alex for helping us with that. We're putting some of the paperwork together for the coordinator's position. Item number six, we're accepting a nomination for employee of the month. Item number seven, on our detention statistics, the average population for the month of July 17th, August 13th, there was 64 inmates, five less than last month. High population males was 63, three less than last month. High population females was seven, one less than last month. And for this reporting period, there were 70 inmates booked in the facility. That was one more than last reporting period, and this shows a slight decrease in, in our activity. Active length of stay in the reporting period is 8.42 days. Current demographic, I again submitted those snapshots for you. If you have any questions, please let me know, or I'll answer any of those questions. Again, it kind of gives you an idea of what the demographics are as far as the inmate statistics, the census, gender information, the COO's daily report, and the classification totals and average age. Item number eight, on our monthly arrest totals, again, this is just for the month of July 2015. Silver City Police Department had 92, Grant County SO had 29, New Mexico State Police had 21, BIC PD had four, Santa Clara had five, and Hurley had four. Item number four, on our transports, we had 26 district court transports. Division one, there were 15. Division two, we had four. Silver City Municipal Court, we had two, and the rest of the courts had zero. We conducted 22 medical transports during this reporting period for a total of 69. And item number 10, on our utilization and occupancy, we had 32, 23 felonies, 63 misdemeanors, 101 probation and warrants for a total of 187. Total hours in custody is 23,996. And the sentencing shows statistics pretty much remain the same for this reporting period. That's my report, sir.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome, sir.
Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I did have some meetings last week, or actually, at the beginning of this week, with ASA Architects on the courthouse. They seem to have already put a, a plan together to try and update the electrical system at the courthouse. It seems as though they're going to fix all of the issues that we have there, plus put enough updates in to, so that we potentially could have an update to the HVAC system at some point also. And in those discussions also, we've found out that it's going to cost enough money less than we anticipated, so that's, that's a good thing. Also, we've been working with Engineers, Inc., to try to finalize the engineering for North Hurley Road so that we can get all of our stuff in for the colonias, projects that we have coming, the construction project for the intersection at North Hurley and what the spur that comes off of 180. We will bring next month, we're going to bring a, a map identifying potential right-of-way or easement, similar to what we did with Rosedale Road. We haven't been able to find any right-of-way information from, from the Mexico DOT, as that used to be the old state highway that runs through there. And apparently, they don't have any information regarding that. So we've identified all of the parcels around the roadway. There are some potential issues with the railroad right-of-way, but we're trying to get those things resolved, and, and we'll bring a map to the Commission for potential approval next month. Also, the bids have been, the bids are completed, but have been sent off to Mexico Environment Department for the waterline improvements in Rosedale Road. We, I guess apparently they have to be accepted and approved by the Mexico Environment Department, so that's where that project is at. We did have public hearings for CDBG. The application process, I think that Frisella said something about next March, the applications will be done. We have public hearings that we try and get potential ideas for, for projects. We held a, a hearing in, in Cliff, in Amigos, and two here in Dallas Silver City. We had actually probably four, probably five projects that would, that potentially would qualify under the CDBG program. Some of them may or not be what we feel is a priority, but I will send a formal report to each Commissioner, and that way we can discuss them and actually maybe set a priority and, and then decide whether or not we want an application or not. The continuum of care is on our ICIP. We had some requests for roadway improvements was also in our ICIP, mostly identified with school bus routes and, and county arterials. But we also, of course, had the baseball facility in, in the Cliff area. But we also had a request for a wellness center or some type of facility that people could get treatments in the Cliff area. There was a lot of seniors that showed up to our meeting, and, and they were pretty adamant about the fact that they have to drive 30 miles and 30 miles back to receive any type of medical treatment and any type of physical therapy, or they even had a request for a swimming pool, so they could, they could get, I mean, that type of, that type of therapy, so.
Joe Shepherd's in charge of swimming pools.
Well, anyway, those are requests that potentially would qualify. And of all the meetings, we probably, probably had the most ever that I've seen. We've been, I've been doing this now for about eight, nine years, and the Cliff, the Cliff people really, they brought probably 20 or 25 people to, to the meeting.
Doesn't HMS have a clinic out there?
They have a clinic. They don't, they don't, they offer just regular, regular medical services through, I mean, they have a nurse practitioner out there that sees people. They don't really offer any type of, they were talking more about therapeutic type stuff. They have to come in to, I mean, to, I guess to Billy Casper to receive therapy and, or some of the other places in town, and, and they just felt that it was maybe, maybe better served if, if they could get somebody out there one or two days, or, you know, a couple of days a month, or a couple of days a week, so they could offer those same services. Those are just some of the ideas that came out.
Is that clinic similar to the one in Amigos?
I think so.
Yes, I mean, people love the one in Amigos. They're doing a really good job.
Yeah, it does really come in handy, especially for, you know, when you have a sick kid and they're coming out of, out of school. And plus, we have a lot of seniors in the area, and they go there to get their, you know, their prescriptions redone and all that kind of good stuff, so. Outside of that, I've had a request from Commissioner Hall to kind of go over the assessment districts, where we're at with those, kind of the process and what we got left. Currently, with the Loma Verde subdivision, we are in the bid process. We're required to go out to bid for the construction of the project. We do have an estimate from, from Earl, which we use for all of the, all the documents at this point. And from that, so now we go out to bid. We see qualified bids. If we find a bid that could potentially be less or better serve the purpose of the assessment district, the Commission could award that bid, and that, that bid would actually be the final assessment that is, is given to, to the residences. We are, on the other hand, on the Wind Canyon subdivision, we're still trying to put together all of the public notices. As I explained at the very beginning of the process, you have to, once, once the County Commission agrees to enter into the assessment district, we have to give public notice to each individual landowner. Well, in that process, you have to get a legal description of each individual parcel that will be in, in there, in that subdivision. Well, since the Wind Canyon subdivision residences have chosen to, to get all the people in the subdivision to, to assist in paying for the road, because after the road, it comes in and out of subdivision, we've had to identify and describe each individual subdivision. So whether it's through deed research, through whether it's utilizing surveys, those legal descriptions, it's a pretty, it's a pretty lengthy type process. Then, once you get all those descriptions, you have to individually give notice to each individual parcel owner. The statute says hand-deliver. So if you can't hand-deliver, then if they're not in, in the immediate area, then you have to send them by mail. And that's that 30 days before you even have the public hearing.
So does a plot survey of the subdivision count for this portion?
Most of the time, the plot survey identifies lots. Once they're sold, then you actually have a description of the lot. Most of the time, you have descriptions of the entire subdivision, and then you have lot numbers, and they're identified as lot numbers. We thought we may potentially use the lot numbers to, to identify them, but we felt that we- we better adhere to the statute like it reads and go ahead and identify each individual lot, so it's been a pretty lengthy process, and I know that those, the people in both subdivisions have been really patient with us, the columns, people we're at. Sometimes there's a misconception that as soon as the county commission approves the assessment district, and as soon as they accept the assessment district, then their constructions tend to follow, and that's just not the case. With Loma Verde, the next step would be to move into what's the final assessment. After we receive the bids, we have a firm number on what we feel the assessment, then we go and approve of the assessment rule, and that will be done through resolution. At the same time, we'll have a resolution to adopt an ordinance, and of course, there's a waiting period for that time, in case anybody wants to protest what they're being assessed, and then we'll go into the ordinance phase. And once the ordinance is adopted, then we can actually go into the construction, I think, within a thirty-day period. So we still have about, I would say about ninety days to maybe a hundred-and-twenty days left for the Loma Verde, probably still at least four to five months left for Wind Canyon. I did speak with Commissioner Hall yesterday and told him that I would actually try and put something on paper, so people could actually take a look at the timeframes that they're looking at. There's a lot of thirty-day waiting periods, there's fifteen days here, there's thirty days here, plus we have to wait till the, for the county commission meeting, we try to schedule them according to the schedules of the county commission meetings. Sometimes we have to wait, you know, an additional two weeks or whatever it may be, so. So I'm trying to put together something that kind of identifies the timeframe, so people will be better understanding of the process. I wasn't able to do that yesterday afternoon, but I'll continue to work on it, and I'll get a copy to each one of you, so you can give it to your residences. With that, that's about all I got today, unless you have any questions.
Any questions, Anthony? Okay. Move on to Earl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Pretty much business as usual down there. The monsoon season hasn't really hit us very hard this year. We did, Earl working on some washouts down in Village of Red Rock, we should finish those up today. The big rain we had Saturday night, that's keeping us pretty busy right now. I asked residents to be patient, I've got a lot of calls coming in, but I got every blade running that we've got, and let's just have some patience till we can get around to you on there. We did go over and help Barrett get their roads bog-sealed, they've got a couple more to do, we'll do them in a couple of weeks when the city comes and bogseals these in here, we'll catch them and finish those out. We went down to the landfill and did some work for those guys so they could go in there and pave another section from where we stopped the last time, all the way to the scales, and they got that completed last Friday on there. It came out pretty nice, so residents should be really happy about that. Other than that, business as usual down there, unless you all have any question, any questions for? No? Okay. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm the board. Just a few things, kind of, Justin went over the airport stuff, still trying to, got some lights out, some runway lights that we're trying to work on, just trying to get some funding with those, had some issues with the AWAS system as well, hopefully we can get that resolved. Baton Park, weeds, 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 just trying to keep up with that, because as a conference center now, there's no business there, it's all shifted to Fort Barrett, so working with them, working with the guys out there, making sure, you know, trash isn't all over, because it's busy every weekend now. The other thing is working with Fort Barrett Medical Center, and Earl, trying to get them a path from the Fort Barrett to the Baton building as an emergency, a place where they go in case of emergency, where they have to evacuate, but with beds and wheelchairs and all that, Earl has put together a kind of a bid for them. They're going to pay for it, I believe you're going to help some of the impact services with the equipment, but the bill is going to be from Fort Barrett Medical Center, and it's, what it is, is going to be on the north end up there, it's a road out the back, that will just go right into the Baton building there, and so we're working with that, trying to get that, working through the Parks and Rec Committee.
Now, that road, I'd like to see us maybe put some better parking back there, maybe we could use that as some kind of a, of a line, so we can do something better back there, because it gets pretty bad out there when it's under storm.
Mr. Chairman, now, Mr. Ronald just increased the budget on that, so.
That needs to be paid off.
So, anyway, so we're working on that, and we'll, you know, update you on that as we move forward. Again, want to thank Earl for the work that he did, you know, so far as getting the bids and all that into us. Shooting range, Justin talked about that, we met with the board members there, trying to put bylaws together and everything, what they want to do, keeping up with the weeds there as well, making sure that that's getting done. And then just the regular maintenance through the county. We have some layoffs, trying to fill some positions. Esther, that I'm from the courthouse retired, not officially, but she's gone now, so we're going to try to fill that position here shortly. Dave from airport is going on some military leave for quite a long time, so we're trying to shift. We had a part-timer on the weekend, we kind of shifted him over with the training he had to take over that position for a while, and now trying to bring another person in.
If it's not as official, I'd like to see if we can get her plaque or something.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ronald, that's what we were thinking as well, to make sure we get her recognized. Fire departments, pretty quiet, we had structured fire in Hurley this weekend, we tried to help them out a little bit, but, so, that with Whiskey Creek and I think Fort Barrett went out there and kind of assisted them with that. Some of the volunteer fire departments will be going to the Fourth Annual Expo in Fire Training in Socorro in September, so there'll be a few of the fire departments going there. Other than that, unless you have any questions, we're trying to wrap up, go to communes the fiscal year, obviously they're federal, so that ends September, the end of September, first of October starts in the fiscal year, so we're working with Kim on that. Other than that, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
You're out at the Tyrone Fire Department, they put on a great open house, and I congratulate you and the chief and everything that they've done out there, that's a good show.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall, and that's the thing again, were, are my goal when I took over the FMOS to work with the fire departments, the volunteers, try to do some ISO assessments, get that ISO assessment down to bring in more funding for them, working with San Rita, as you said, Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to get them, we kind of got the architects involved now with that, we're going back and forth on meetings with Chief Standard over there to see where we're at on price, so that's going forward. Again, they've put in this joint, this application to maybe help them a little bit with the funding, but we are working hard. I know that Fort Barrett got a decrease in their ISO rating, Whiskey Creek also got a decrease in their ISO rating, we're waiting on Tyrone, we're looking at San Rita going through one that will help them with this new station that they're going to put up, so everything's going well. Right now, we have kind of a small, you know, a small emergency over in Fiero with their waterline bust. I'm working with Chief Rose, that's why he's here, we're going to meet after this, to see if we can get some water out there to the people just for, you know, flush toilets and do all that. It's going to be out for about three days, so I'm reaching out for some of our BFDs to see if we can, in Venedia. And so, working with Mr. Cook, I think he's the chairman of the Water Association out there, or vice chair, so I'm going to work with the BFDs and see if we can maybe put a drop tank out there for them, maybe even call the Forest Service, they've got what's called a pumpkin, which holds about six thousand gallons of water, and see if we can shuttle some water in there, and see if that will help them for the next three days. So I'll keep you guys informed and charging on that.
We don't have anything available that's potable, right?
No, that's what I told them. So that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Well, this time of year is really crazy, and I'd like to just congratulate all our employees, especially the maintenance and road department for all their hard work, especially this time of year, because of all the flooding and, you know, the weeds and stuff, you all take care of those fields really, really well, and not to mention the twenty-some buildings that we have, so thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Chairman?
It's been pretty steady for us lately, and now that school started, that's kept us a little bit busy monitoring traffic in our school bus routes. On Saturday, you're all aware of the storm we had, dispatch did take a hit that night, knocked down our phone service and radios for a while, and I want to thank my staff for what they did that night, they really came together and tried to make sure that the services were rendered that night that were needed. With the phone services down, they're still down, as of today, I believe the regular phone line is still down, nine-one-one is working, all calls that are going into dispatch right now are going to Deming, they're being routed to Deming, and then Deming will call our office here and get services out to the people. But I just want to thank my staff for what they do, they've been really busy dealing with that, and I have nothing else to report on, unless you have any questions.
Any questions, Commissioner? No?
I do have a real quick question. Just wanted to see, how is our radio system working? Because I was told by some of the officers that there's some areas that are really bad, where they can't communicate with anyone, and it's very crucial, of course, communication is the key, but how's that going, and is our contracted company doing a good job trying to get things back up?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I've been working with the Forest Service through their grant that we get from them, we've been able to purchase equipment, and what's going to happen, they graciously donated us a piece of property up, not a piece of property, just space up in, up at Signal Peak, and we're going to move our base station up there, so we'll be having our repeater up in Signal Peak, which is higher, which is going to be able to allow us to communicate a lot better. It should improve our reception and communications in the Amoebus area and in Cliff. All the equipment was ordered, it has arrived, they've already started installing it, so it's just a matter of time. That concern has been there for a while that we've been dealing with, and I've been able to work with the Forest Service on it, and they've been gracious to help us with that, to get that done, so hopefully here, soon, we'll be able to get that all operational.
Good.
So, that's what we're working on.
Thanks, Chair. Alfred, you filling in today, huh?
Yes, sir. Good morning. Chairman and Commissioners, just a few things that we have in the office. Right now, I have a property tax division in our office, getting ready for our tax sale, which will be coming up on October the thirteenth at ten a.m. here in these chambers. One of the things, you know, and people, they got letters from the state, so I encourage those people that receive, please come in or call these guys, see if you can work something out with them. We had over three-hundred-and-forty accounts that were sent to the state, some will go back, all the way back to two thousand and five, so hopefully they'll clean that all up and get us current. Address changes, I encourage everybody that had any kind of an address change, please notify the assessor's office, because we'll have the bills coming out here in a few months, want to make sure everybody gets them. Also, as far as some people have made, paid off their homes, we do not know that they paid them off unless they tell us, and we need to, we need to know, because if not, we're going to send the file back to the mortgage company, they're not going to pay it, then they go delinquent, and, because the state statute says that, you know, it's the taxpayer's responsibility that they know they pay taxes, a lot of people don't understand that. They think that when they do pay it off, they do send the release of lien to the clerk's office, they record it, and that's it, and, you know, it's the responsibility of the people to let us know as well that it was paid off, so make sure that they get their bill.
Does the clerk's office tell them? When they come in to file a release of lien, that you probably should go to the treasurer's office also?
Sure, the question is usually that's sent by the bank to us, so the most, about ninety-nine percent of the time, the bank is sending that.
Yeah, it's the bank that sends everything to them, you know, and so, it's tough, I mean, it's, but, you know, we just, I just want to encourage everybody, let them know out there that they need to let us know that it is paid off, we want to make sure that they get the bill, they do not move a lien, they can get on the list by the state. We have about four gentlemen here working on that right now, just to try and clean us up to be current, we're, like I say, we're in the rears about two thousand and five, so anybody that's out there that's on the list, you know, please, please notify, call them, their number's on those letters, please call them or come by the office.
Can you pick up the list that you're off?
Uh, the list hasn't been, they're going to start going door-to-door right now and red-tagging all these properties. Once they do that, they got to send out certified letters to let them know, they give them a three-week window there, and if they get no response, then they go into the paper, the list will be in the paper. One of the things there too, you've got to register for the option about an hour before, about nine o'clock, you've got to come in and register, of course, make sure that you have certified funds, letters from your banks. Also, you need to research everything that's on that list in the paper, because there could be liens, mortgages attached to it, and you're going to pick up everything as far as that's concerned, and we notify these people, we try to at least, to let them know, and then they have to keep in contact with us, because the people have up until an hour before the option to pay it off, so just let everybody know. If they have any questions, they can call our office.
Thank you very much, Officer. Any questions, Frank?
And I don't know enough about computers, I barely turn mine on, but it seemed like this in two thousand and fifteen, what we're looking at, some method where we have computer connection between the different offices, where one action will impact the action from another office, is that that will be shared electronically. I guess I said that right, I don't understand, you know, in nineteen-twelve, when the counties were set up with all the different departments, there was reasons for them.
Yeah.
That's how I think about it.
Tom?
Thank you, Chairman, appreciate it. I really don't have a report, we're just working on some things. In November is when we, as a county, set all the polling locations for Grant County for next year's elections, so we're getting some things done in our office, and proposals, some different ideas that we have, where we can, you know, serve our residents with the good quality polling locations for the upcoming elections. Sure do.
Seems like there's just one all the time.
It's going to be a big one.
Yes. All right. Madam Manager?
As you mentioned earlier, September was a little difficult to get a quorum of commissioners present for a meeting, so we will have one meeting in September, and that will be on September tenth, and hopefully that will coincide with the property tax rates when they come in, those have to be approved within five days of receipt, so I'm hoping that will work. In our office, just continuing to work on cleaning up old policies, revising several of those, we're waiting on approval of the final budget. We did have to submit some more information on intergovernmental grants, as far as reimbursements, court communes being one of those. Hopefully, the auditors will be in sometime next month to begin our year-end audit, so we're staying busy. Questions?
I know the sheriff didn't mention it, and you didn't mention it, and Randy's gone, but how's the, the vault coming? Or is it still, is it still?
I talked with them, well, there was some issues with the rain. I had Kevin come in yesterday and take a look at it, the sheriff had some concerns. Kevin came in and did a walkthrough with Ernie, Ernie also walked through with the sheriff. Contrary to what it looks like, they're actually a little bit ahead of schedule, we're waiting. There were some issues with some materials for the roof, metal crafts should have those installed, it's the week of September fourth, finish up the roof, and they can finish the interior, but.
Will that stop the leaking?
Yes, yes, and when you have sideways rain, when things aren't complete and sealed, and when concrete is not sealed, it's porous and rain is going to come through. There is some sheet rock that will have to be replaced. We will also be taking moisture readings every day for the next five days to make sure that there wasn't any moisture that seeped in somewhere. There's also some circulation fans going to dry anything out that we might have not seen visibly, so, well, Kevin will give me a report on those moisture readings, but there was one section of drywall that appeared to be damaged that Ernie will replace, so they're on top of it. I mean, it looks, and it's not making a lot sense the way that it's coming to be, but according to the schedule that was provided. Yeah, well, it still, it still does, it was, it's an inside pool now, but, yeah.
Joe Shepherd's in charge of pools.
Yeah, yeah. Ours is just natural spring water.
I know that's not funny to you, Sheriff.
Oh, I have to find the humor, I think, but anyway, it, things have not really made a lot of sense in the order that they've done it, but it's ahead of the schedule that was provided slightly, so.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Any questions, Charlene? Okay, take your motions, Chair.
I'll move a second.
I'll move a favor, say hi.
Hi.